Good evening. Welcome to the April 2, 2012 meeting of the Committee of the Hall. Bertie, could you call the roll, please?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck absent. Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Acting Chairman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Acting Chairman, we have a quorum.
First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the February 6 committee meeting. Copy the meeting minutes that included. Any comments, revisions? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Fall is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Third item this evening on the agenda is a report from the Property and Public Lands Committee regarding land disposition matters. And I'll give a little color on that. Myself, Alderman Novit, and Alderman Edelman are part of that committee. We've been actually very busy over the last several months. And so we thought we'd take a little time this evening and talk about a few of the items that we've been focused on and have a chance for a little bit of exchange. And certainly Kent and Mike, if you want to jump in and add color or comments or disagree with me, delighted to have you do that. One of the things that we tackled early on is the idea of trying to understand how we cope with and deal with the availability of the Laurel Avenue piece, the old MS Center. That's obviously a property that's got a lot of attention for quite a while. And then as the real estate market began to deteriorate, it became, obviously, we weren't going to be able to do too much with it for some period of time. The discussion over the last few weeks has really been focused upon what we can do to help not just be reactive to potential development of that site and therefore the sale of that, but also be a little more proactive. And those discussions have really kind of focused on the possibility of trying to create some type of incentive for development on that piece. And that incentive has really focused on the idea of the possibility of using tax increment financing, or TIF, on that site. We have explored the idea with a consultant. We had a feasibility study done, and that feasibility study came out very positively. And so I think the idea is, over the next couple of months, is to frame the idea of a TIF on that site with the hope that that will spur some development interest even in today's slow market. And we've explored different ideas. And I know Tom, we've talked about it, and others have talked about the idea of expanding that TIF. We have had more discussions about that of late. I don't think we made a final decision on that, but we're looking at some different alternatives for that as well. So, again, an important piece of what we've been doing over the last few weeks and something we think is really important for the community. The next item, and we did have a committee meeting this morning, we talked about, is the train station. And obviously, what's been happening now over the last few months is we've been, the city's been aggressively trying to find tenants for the station. We are very excited and very fortunate, obviously, to have Pasqualezi Market opening up there, I think, in about a month. So that would be a terrific anchor for that project and for that piece of downtown. But we've had another very interested retailer approach us about the use for the station. And that retailer is Dunkin' Donuts. And over the last several weeks, Kathy and Karina have spent a good deal of time with the Dunkin' Donuts folks, looking at plans for the station. Obviously, when you talk, think about a Dunkin' Donuts, you think about signage, you think about a drive-through, you think about access, visibility. And all those issues have kind of come to the forefront. And they're all issues that we're trying to tackle. But I think the general consensus among the committee, and Kent and Mike, you can jump in, is that it's a, would definitely be a positive, would be a great economic development piece for the city, and would certainly be a welcomed addition to the train station, particularly for those people who are commuting downtown on a regular basis. So, we're aware that, and the franchisee is aware, that there are some issues relative to the historic nature of the station. We're going to need to get some input from the HPC, excuse me, we're going to need to get some, certainly some input from the Plan Commission. But I think we view it as a very positive opportunity, and I think we're going to continue to pursue it with the help of Karina and Kathy, and we're going to continue to push that forward. Mike, any thoughts on that?
No, other than I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. And, yeah, again, there's certain aspects that are going to have to be visited and fine-tuned. The traffic aspect of the parking lot at the train station, obviously, it's a narrow area to the east of the entryway. Again, it's going to be examined, fine-tuned, so we optimize. With the Dunkin' Donuts, is the dry cleaner spot still open at the train station? Have we filled the train station, if that's the case?
They moved. They moved.
That space is still available. At one time, we had talked about trying to relocate the Chamber of Commerce into that space. The Chamber of Commerce is right now moving to a space within Deer Path Arcade, on Deer Path. And so that space is available, and we're going to keep looking for a tenant there. It's not as desirable as some of the other spaces because it doesn't have any access to the west, but we'll keep looking for a new tenant.
Yeah. So there's still another opportunity there that we have to fill. And again, one of the biggest issues is, obviously, with the Dunkin' Donuts rooting the traffic through, where signage is going to be tricky. And, you know, again, we'll work on that, certainly.
You got it. A signage issue, excuse me, the drive-through issue will require potentially raising the drive-through lane some portion, not substantially, but enough to make a difference.
We discussed earlier today about the possibility of rewriting the bike path and potentially keeping the bikes away from the drive-through. Obviously, that would be a good thing. So a lot of, as Kent said, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of issues with it. But fundamentally, it sounds like there's a strong interest on behalf of the franchisee and sounds like a positive thing. Hopefully, we can, we're encouraged about being able to get it worked out.
What would this be? Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins? I mean, donuts.
That's a good question. I think it's just Dunkin' Donuts. So that doesn't mean you couldn't have donuts in the evening if you wanted them, so.
No, I'd never eat donuts.
Okay. The next thing we've talked about, it's a tough night.
I'd never eat donuts.
The next item we've spent some time talking about is the Grove Campus. And obviously, I think the feeling among the committee is that it's an incredibly important piece of property that has tremendous potential, it has a long history, obviously, with the city. And there's no question that we want to be smart about what happens to it today and what happens to it in the future. We have two of the buildings on the campus, Voe Wiler and Bennett, that have some uncertainty about tenancy. Voe Wiler currently has the Music Institute of Chicago, which has expressed some interest in staying in the building for some period of time. Not quite sure how long, not sure kind of what their long-term plans are, and I think they're trying to develop those now. And then Bennett Hall, which really has no tenant in it at this point in time. So there's been some discussion about the possibility of looking for a potential buyer for those buildings. I think we've come to the conclusion as a committee that probably makes sense to step back a bit and look at developing a master plan for that property. So before we do anything definitive with either one of those buildings, above and beyond potentially a shorter-term lease with the Music Institute. I think the thought is, let's enter into a planning exercise, perhaps this summer, that will allow us to develop some good thoughts on kind of where we see the site going. Want to involve the neighbors, want to involve some of the users that are currently there, and get some really good input and some thoughts and ideas about where we take the property long-term. Makes sense? Bob, any thoughts on that?
Great idea. We had talked about revisiting the original SUPs when Grove Campus was originally developed and approved. And then, more importantly, I think, engaging the current stakeholders, senior commission and other groups like that, as well as neighboring properties, to really come up with this plan. There'd been some talk years ago about actually connecting the park with the Grove Campus plan. So I think it's probably a good idea to revisit that before we get into any real details, arrangements for what are we going to do with specific buildings.
And I think the conversation today, again, was, let's think about how we plan thoughtfully for the use of that campus, for the use of that property. You know, we've had discussions in the past about senior housing, we've had discussions in the past about affordable housing and other uses for the property. So let's think about it, let's be thoughtful about it, and I think engage in a planning process, which I think probably makes some good sense. The last thing we spent some time on, excuse me, over the last few months, has been quite simply evaluating city assets. So we've taken the list of city-owned properties and, based upon input from staff, have looked at some alternatives for those properties, perhaps the idea of looking at both long-term and short-term uses for those. And out of that has come a few items, easements we're looking at and trying to deal with. But one particular item that has, will come before the Plan Commission this month, I think it's the 14th, Kathy, is that correct?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. Is the sale of the three lots at Wedgewood and the Wedgewood subdivision. At this point in time, the plan is to proceed with that, subject to the Plan Commission rezoning those lots from OA, or Open Area, to R4, which is the balance of the subdivision. So the thought there is, once it will move through Plan Commission, subject to Plan Commission approval, I think we'll come back to the council for final approval and then start that process. So, you know, the idea is to kind of thoughtfully look at and evaluate the assets the city owns, not just for opportunities to sell and get cash from them, but quite simply to make smart uses. And I think Grove is a good example of that as well, so. That was kind of the list. I don't know, Ken or Mike, if there's anything else that you want to?
Really nothing to add on, at this point. And, you know, again, our next meeting's in May. I thought we made some tremendous progress on the items that were brought up today. And it's been great.
Mike, anything else?
Nope.
You covered it.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment. I think we've got somebody here that may do so. Bob, is that correct?
Well, actually, I, the council will indulge me, I did invite Todd Nagy and to be here this evening on behalf of Croya to talk about the recent tragedies that have occurred within our community and what's going on, both at Croya, at the schools, and in our churches, to address that problem. So Todd, if you want to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. Dr. Cooley's here from the school and is here to join me. I started with Croya in 1995, and I've moved my way up to becoming the Croya manager. After 17 years, this is the last place that I would expect to be coming to talk to you about these, or the last topic that I expect to be coming to talk to you about. I would be remiss if I didn't start with the fact that Croya began in the late '70s as a discussion from Mayor Waldeck and Frank Farwell, current, at the time Alderman, and an ad hoc committee that was put together to look at what was going on with our youth. And after a few suicides and some other actions that had taken place, you know, Croya was the dream, Croya was what came about. And you can be very proud that it is still addressing some incredible needs and abilities and grooming our kids for their futures, as am I proud to be a part of the organization and a member of the city staff. We're all, you know, extremely sad with the recent transactions of the different things the kids are going through and the situations that have happened. But we want you to know that we're on the front line and we're talking to the kids, we're listening here, we're opening up Croya as we speak for members of some of the tragedies that, kids that are going through some of these issues, to remember their friends, whether it be to scrapbook for their parents of the deceased, or to talk about how they're feeling. We're actually connecting very closely with the schools, as Dr. Cooley will tell you. We're in the schools almost on a daily basis, dealing with some of the issues that the kids, come up with the kids. We're going to be hosting a program on Friday of some alumni that are concerned about things that have been going on, to come back and talk to some of the high school kids about some of the things that they're going through and potentially give them some, you know, insight as to things beyond high school. But the big program for tomorrow is this panel discussion that's going to take place at Gorton Community Center at 7:00. And it's really going to be addressing, obviously, some of the concerns that are going on, it's for adults in the community who want to be able to be heard, but also to talk to, whether it be in small groups, or as, we'll begin with a panel discussion, that'll be experts or mental health, you know, professionals, that are going to talk about some of the reasons, some of the causes, some of the things that these tragedies bring out in a community. We're devastated, there's no question about it, we're kind of numb, I think, at this point. But like I said at the beginning, you can be very proud that some of the things that we're doing at Croya are really affecting the kids in a positive way. The networking that's happening between Croya and the youth pastors at the churches is, has been incredible. We're getting to know a lot more people, a lot quickly, really, very quickly, and feeling as if the hearts are all in the right place to support our youth. But this is a bigger thing than just the schools, or Croya, or Lead, any other organizations or the city. We need everybody on board, and so I'm here to let you know that we're going to be looking at action plans, we're going to be looking at all sorts of programs. The peer training program, which was designed in the '80s as a collaboration between the high school and Croya, is, has not been done for a couple of years, and we're doing a revamping on it to make sure that it's up to speed with current, you know, emotional wellness trends, some of the technology, the terminology that's being used right now at the high school. And between the high school and our Croya staff, we're going to be bringing that back into the school first thing this next coming year in September. So we're really happy about a lot of the things that we're doing, but we're going to need a lot of support moving forward. There's no question about the fact that it's a community-wide crisis, and we definitely need everybody to be on board. So thanks for letting me talk, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
Okay. Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. I'm an assistant superintendent in the schools. Dr. Griffith asked me to attend in his absence tonight. He had a personal matter that he needed to be with, so he sends his greetings even in this sad time. But I wanted to let you know that, just really briefly, certainly Todd has hit on the fact that we feel like we're strong partners with Croya, and we feel like the City of Lake Forest and the Village of Lake Bluff are part of that partnership. And I could describe to you a dozen different ways in which that occurs. But I want to let you know, too, that we have a strong infrastructure in place, so that when a crisis like this occurs, we're ready to go. And not every people, everybody realizes, we have three social workers every single day at the high school, we have two school psychologists, we have seven guidance counselors, we have four deans, one of whom is a social worker, too. So we have a really strong cast of mental health professionals that are in the high school every day. We additionally have a crisis team that at any kind of event like this might occur, or a wide variety of other things, kind of goes into high gear, and they look at what students might be affected by any given crisis, what faculty might be affected, how are we going to get around to different classrooms, to different people, what is our plan in these circumstances? And the people on that team, we chose them because they have a strong background in mental health, you know, kinds of issues. So we have that in place. Despite that, these issues occur, unfortunately, you know, teen suicide is one of the leading causes of death amongst this age group, so unfortunately, we have to face it in a pretty serious way right now. But I wanted to let you know that we've reached out to all kinds of different experts and professionals. We don't feel like we can do it all or know it all, so we continually reach out. We've had individuals locally in for training for our full faculty since, in February, and, you know, did a parent presentation as well, and are partnering with some of the things that are coming up here, too. One of the things I wanted to make sure you were aware of, that in terms of the partnership, is we're really, really pleased with Deputy Chief Burmeister, who's been a member of Task Force that we've put together to look at all of the resources in the community and look for the strong points, look for the gaps, and that kind of thing. So he's been on that committee, as well as sitting on a county suicide task force. So he was the perfect individual to join us and really appreciate the time that you allow him to put forth in that. I know that he's also really looking closely at Metro, Union Pacific, they're doing a, I think it's called a special inspection train this week, and he informed the schools and invited us to attend. So there's a lot of high-level collaboration going on right now. We have so many different events and things that we're working on, I don't want to give you all of those facts, but I do want you to know that that's certainly available to you and any member of the community. And I think maybe Ann Whipple could help us out, if any of you want to know a specific rundown of the various things.
Questions?
No, I certainly want to just thank you both for being here this evening, and I think the whole community feels the pain that we've all gone through here in the last few months. And I think as even this council, as we, you know, chatted informally before the council this evening at dinner, just talking about, well, how can we help? And I think, you know, the one thing I heard there is just so many different issues, probably, that are all combined in all of these events. And it's hard to figure out, how do you pick them apart, and where do you start, and how do you address it? But it's probably like any problem, you just have to start somewhere. It may not always be the perfect place, but to start somewhere and continue. So we're all here, and the city and its resources are more than willing and able to give their time and talent to help in anything that we can do to, you know, help alleviate and shed light on this whole issue and what we can do to, obviously, not go through this again.
I wanted to just add that on Wednesday night at 7:00, both Bob Kylie and Drew Irvin from the Lake Bluff are going to be attending a program that we're putting together with the kids in order to talk about the state of the community, what the kids are saying, and give them a voice, just as Croya has done for 30 years. And wanting to be able to say when they speak and when they talk about things that they need and the things that they're concerned about, and the things that are going well in their lives, that people that can make a difference and that people are really listening will be there to support them. So we appreciate that.
We thank you. Any comments?
Thank you both very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else?
I am happy to advance a couple of things that are on the council agenda.
Perhaps ASR to start, Bob, with Ramish, or?
We could start right at the beginning, or you could take the last one, which was a very hot topic at your last meeting, which was composting. I know Mike Thomas is here, and he's got some updated information because they went back and viewed the videotape, believe it or not, we have videotape in the meeting. So Michael, why don't you come forward and brief us on that and?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. As Bob noted, we went back and looked at our tapes as far as when the bids were submitted, and we're very thankful to say that we actually have a system at our new MS facility that has video cameras throughout it. We were able to see that this specific bid was, in fact, handed in before the 10:00 AM deadline. So although we, as we wrote it up, I made the mistake of not including that in the write-up, we went ahead and discussed it with you at the last meeting. We went and looked at the tapes and found that, in fact, he did submit it, but he walked around a little bit and didn't realize he needed to go downstairs where the bid opening was at. So therefore, our recommendation is to go with the company P. Clifford Miller Incorporated. He's the low bid. We're looking to have the contract awarded for one year, with the potential of two one-year agreements after that. Again, we're going to be studying and looking into our sanitation operations this summer and come back to you with a full report. That will also review the composting operations. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Just to affirm, Cliff Miller is a current operator.
That is correct.
And the bid was significantly lower than the second bid.
That is correct.
And you did make it by eight seconds.
Eight seconds. Fifty-nine or fifty-two seconds.
Thank heavens for technology, right?
Yes.
And we do have a date and timestamp now?
We have modified the operations at the front counter, yes. Everyone is in sync, and now we have the date and timestamp, so yes. Yes, we have modified the procedures accordingly.
It's also a warning that when you come to the MS building, we're watching you.
Thanks, Mike.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you.
On your agenda, under the omnibus bill, the, we have the annual resurfacing program. And I think you had a really extensive write-up on that. We're real pleased with the bids that we've got. It's the second year now that the City of Lake Forest has participated in a joint municipal bidding with neighboring communities. And to the point, we saved, I think, close to $90,000 that we're able to advance a road that was tentatively scheduled for next year. And we'd be, Ramish is here to answer any specific questions that you might have about any of the roads that are on the proposed list for the upcoming year.
Ramish, I got a onslaught of neighbors this weekend asking about Summit and went out there to, it's like gravel. Is that not quite on the list yet?
Yeah, it is scheduled, Alderman. She did, I did talk to her, we said that we're going to take, as part of our pavement patching, we are going to temporarily patch, and they need it scheduled for next year.
Okay.
So we will address it as a patching program.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Ramish. I'm not trying to push for a given specific project, but it was.
Yes.
It was gravel.
Good for you.
Gravel asphalt.
That's not good. Anyone else with questions, Ramish, or about the program?
I'm surprised, the bids came in pretty aggressive. That's great, Ramish.
Okay.
How does it work out per ton, or what is your unit price? What is the unit on this?
Last year.
How does it compare to last year? I'm just looking at fuel price impacts.
Yeah, last year we had $65 per ton, and this year we got $71. So, again.
Not crazy.
We are, again, we are trying to improve. Next year, we'll try to go a little bit early. I think by bidding it in March, we feel that we may have, you know, the prices started going up right in March, April. So we are hoping to improve next year. If we'll try to bid it a little bit early, we might get even better prices. So that's our goal.
Yeah, I mean, these guys are trying to fill their plans for the whole year.
Exactly. That's all they're trying to do, yeah.
Ramish, last year, didn't, didn't the City of Lake Forest kind of run this project?
Right.
Is that going to happen again this year, or is it going to be another municipality?
It's going to be Highland Park, right? So this year, Highland Park is running the, you know, they are coordinating all the projects, so the bid opening was done by them and everything. But City of Lake Forest did do their own specs and all, but we gave it to Highland Park. They put the plans, they bid it out, and then each municipality has to award their own, and then we're going to start the project with a kickoff meeting with all the four municipalities.
And that first paving is targeted for when?
First, typically, we are, all the municipalities, they're all scheduled this month, so we are hoping to break ground sometime mid-May. And usually, they'll start with grinding, and again, we are hoping that by either September, October, to finish all the paving. City of Lake Forest, obviously, has the majority of the contract between the four municipalities, so we're hoping to start mid-May to late May, and then try to wrap it up by end of September or early October.
And then, is the schedule, somewhere on the website, Ramish, is the schedule on there where residents can look and see when certain streets are being done?
Yeah. Typically, Alderman, we do mail all the homeowners, like, two weeks in advance for the entire program, but on a schedule on our website, we will have updates. Typically, it'll show the, you know, they'll see the signs on their streets, and then we have a contact number, so if, and our inspectors are on the job pretty much every day. So let's say there's a big event, usually it happens that we get a request that there's an event, so we try to, always try to accommodate as much as we can with the contractor's schedule. But typically, we do update on our website on a regular basis.
I know, I know, talked to Alderman Marsh about this, you know, when you get residents calling, they're eager to get their street done. Not only do they want to avoid the congestion, the traffic issue, but they're eager to get it done, and they want to see when it's going to happen, so.
Right, yeah. Typically, we like to, you know, we like to pave it and then put the first lift at least right away.
Right.
And then we sit on it, let the, you know, let a lot of trucks go, and then we put the final lift. So we were trying to coordinate, you know, we did put certain elements in the contract where we tried to put back-to-back, but again, they're working with four municipalities. Contractor also has to take into consideration, you know, work going on in other municipalities, so he's trying to coordinate all the four municipalities. But last year, it went, you know, it went, you know, according to the ones where we did without the joint bidding, so we feel that it's a, and it was a win-win for everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Just out of curiosity, last year, we had a lot of projects going on in Green Bay, and 43, and 176, kind of all over in the phasing of the projects.
Right.
We're working on Green Bay this year, south of Wesley.
That's correct.
Are there any competing projects that are going on in adjacent major routes?
Are there any competing projects that are going on in adjacent major routes just to phase a project?
No, no waterman projects. So there's a couple of waterman projects are Tanglewood and Basswood, which is up right. So right now, the only, only thing you might see is maybe some patching or striping, but no major projects anywhere near the, what I call is the collector's streets like Old Elm or, or Green Bay. So no major projects.
And as far as the state goes, you know, the intersection of, what is it, Kennedy and 43, is that completely done?
That's done. That's, that's completely done, yeah. State has no programs planned.
Thank God.
I know this isn't probably a city thing, but Old Elm from Green Bay to 41 is really in bad shape and it just gets worse and worse. Is there any, anything on the horizon to fix that? Is that on ours? Is that on ours?
Yeah. The Grand V line.
Yep.
Oh, okay. I always thought that was a state responsibility.
No, no, city owns, city has agreement with Highland Park.
We own half of it.
We own half, but we have an agreement with Highland Park.
North end to north side?
Yes.
Highland Park can have the south side.
Yep.
Does that mean we're only paving the eastbound or the westbound line?
No, no, we have, we have an existing agreement, right, where we are paving the whole thing.
Ramesh, is there any way to, when they're, when they're redoing the streets, is they, to not be working in front of Cherokee School during the pickup and drop-off times?
We are hopeful.
I mean, my kids are out of there now, but.
Yeah, we'll try to coordinate that we'll do it during, when the school is off in summer.
The whole thing?
At least in front of school, yeah. That's, that's our game plan. We try to hit some of those high pedestrian traffic areas, try to get it done during the school, when the school is off. So that's the game plan.
Good, thanks.
Anything else for Ramesh?
Thank you. You're off then.
If, I know that Mike Thomas really wants to talk about this on prime time, but I might have him come up and give you a quick update on the recycling program because we've got some pretty exciting news this evening and since we've still got some time, we'll make, we'll let Michael go for 20 minutes now and five minutes later. I don't think he heard that.
Twenty minutes?
We'll pull up the PowerPoint real quickly. There we go. Okay, Ramesh, you want to hit the next one? Thanks, that's good. So Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, staff is very pleased to announce that the City of Lake Forest has in fact received the grant for the second phase of recycling carts. It's a $100,000 grant.
Way to go.
In the end, this program's going to cost about $300,000 total. The state, through the two grants that we've received, will be paying for two-thirds of that cost. So the city will have about $100,000 into it. We are very thankful to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for receiving the grant. There were approximately 35 applicants and I think seven of us received the grants. Kudos also to Dan Martin. Dan is the one that wrote the application this time and stuck with DCO with many phone calls and a lot of patients, so he did a great job doing that. One thing that we are going to modify as we go into the remaining part of delivering these carts, we delivered approximately 3,600 of them last September. We have another 2,800 to deliver. With some of the phone calls that we've received since that time, with some residents who are not too happy about the larger-sized carts, is that we have opted to offer a smaller-sized cart, 35-gallon. Carts are made 35, 65, and 95-gallon. And our initial approach was to outfit the entire city with 65-gallon carts. Some of the feedback we're receiving, we thought it would be smart to go ahead and offer the 35. The 35-gallon will hold two recycling bins. Your 65 will hold four recycling bins worth. So what we propose to do is to send out a mailer to all the residents, all 6,500 single-family households, offering them the option if they had taken a 65 and felt it was too large and they want to go down with 35, that they let us know that. Or if they truly prefer smaller, if it's an empty nester household and they prefer a smaller 35-gallon cart, we'd like to know that upfront because our timeline, again, is to send the mailer out in April, come back to you in May and request that we waive the bidding process and authorize the purchase with the same cart producer. But to do that, we've got to have a good number of the 2,800. How many are going to be 65? How many are going to be 35-gallon? So we, we need to hear back from the residents pretty quickly. We will then get on the build schedule with Schaefer to have the carts built. We'll go ahead and put the decals on and then deliver them again in September. One of the challenges is that the state's budget runs through June 30th and they want us to get through this process, pay Schaefer carts and provide them with a canceled check that Schaefer carts or Schaefer system has deposited by the end of June. So that is why there is a tight timeframe for us to get back to City Council in May, one of the two meetings in May, ask approval, get these things ordered, try and get them paid and meet the grant requirements. So with that, we attached the mailer in your City Council packet. And if you have any questions or any, any thoughts on it, that is the draft mailer that we're going to be looking to send all the residents. Again, it looks very similar to the mailer that we sent last year. We have just modified it and added the option to order a 35-gallon cart. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, we, we fill ours already. I mean, can you get 95s or would they not work with the future pickup equipment that we?
They would work. They would work.
Because I would personally go for 95.
Residents, you know, one of the things from our standpoint, why we really wanted to simply standardize is that if a resident moves and they have a 35-gallon and a family of four moves in and they have, they want to take a 65-gallon. When we assemble these carts, they're assembled. You can't, they're delivered to us inserted one and inserted in the other. We go ahead and put the axles and the wheels on. Once you do that, you can't put them inside of one another. If we start having carts coming back to us, where are we going to put them? Where are we going to store them? And that's, that's our only concern of, we understand offering the options and it's very good. And I think the way we tried to address that is offer the residents if they'd like to purchase a second cart. But I'd like to try and hold off having a big inventory of different-sized carts if at all possible. So hopefully we can address it by offering two carts if that's good.
I get a little nervous at the thought of offering an option at a 35-gallon cart. I think it's kind of short-sighted. And I'm like David, and yet I know you have a lot more kids, we're empty nesters plus a 12-year-old and we fill ours every week. I just wonder if people who are asking for the smaller-sized cart really realize how much they can recycle and delete from the garbage. It goes to the landfill.
I hate to see us just have a lot of odds and ends.
Yeah, some of the voicemails, and I'll let you in on some of the voicemails that we've received over the past nine months, some of the residents are very adamant that they don't want a cart whatsoever, that they look at it as being a challenge to get down to the curb and they've threatened even not to recycle. They were very frustrated with the fact that we were coming out and saying, we are going to replace these bins and there's going to be a point in time where we're not going to collect the bins anymore. And we, we heard from a handful of residents that said, if this is correct and you're going to come back to us next year and take our bins and give us carts, we're not going to recycle. So this was our, this was our attempt to try and somewhat appease some of those households.
How many households are there like that?
You know, it's going to be a big guess. My, you know, right off the bat, I think a lot of residents, possibly in Conway, that had signed up for the 65, we're seeing not a lot of those being filled up completely. They might jump back to a 35-gallon. But it's more so where our guess is simply going to be the, the empty nesters or people that for some reason don't want to recycle as much.
How could it be easier to take one of those bins to the curb?
It's simply, it's a small, it's a smaller size. The wheels are eight-inch on the 35-gallon versus 10-inch on the 65-gallon.
But I mean, why would, how could you conclude that it's easier to take one of the old square bins with no wheels on it to the curb than one of these carts? I mean, they're, they're.
I, I think, some of the residents called and said they're concerned about falling. Some even said to us that they could barely move the cart when it was empty, much less if it was full.
I guess that's, that's a possibility.
So part of what we're doing is recognizing the different age groups within the city and if we can accommodate some of the older households, then we'd like to try and do that.
And Michael, to follow up on Mike's question, the 35-gallon carts can still be used with the equipment that we're going to get.
Yes, it can.
Okay.
Just one thought, and this kind of goes to what Mike said. We actually kind of enjoy this whole recycling thing to a large degree and there's sort of a game to see how little garbage we could have. And it's just determining, there's the information on seeing what we could put in and what we can't. So the education of just what you can throw in recycling, I think is really important. And we've done a great job on the inside. There's some information, but maybe there's some other avenues where if you're in doubt, a refrigerator magnet, just anything that you could get a quick reference to, to determine what could be put in recycling.
Sure. We'd be happy to do that. When the city started its recycling program in 1991, that's exactly what we did. We offered four different color magnets, depending upon which day of the collection. So Mondays you had a blue magnet, Tuesdays you had a green magnet. And on there was listing exactly what could be recycled. So we could, we could very easily do that again.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Just so you could answer kind of a household question, if you put something in recycling that shouldn't be there, what happens?
They remove it and it goes to the landfill. So it's, you know, the myth that we hear a lot is that these items aren't recycled and it's absolutely 100% incorrect. If you follow what is on that decal that says, yes, these items are recycled, they're recycled. But if you put anything in there that's under the no category, that gets pulled out and is put in the trash and it's weighed against the city as far as the revenue. If we were to give them what we refer to as clean loads on a regular basis, we'd receive more money. But they expect a certain percentage in each of those 48-foot trailers to have materials that shouldn't be in there. And it costs them money to dispose of that material at the landfills. Therefore, it comes off the top of what they give us, the city. So everything that's under yes, we want the residents to recycle and we'll receive more money, the better job they do.
Michael, does the manufacturer make available an option to put two more castoring wheels on the front of it? So then you've got a four-wheeler and for the people who maybe are a little less firm on their feet, it's like a walker, they're pushing it out on all four?
I, we haven't seen anything.
You know, the suitcases today that you take through the airport that used to have two wheels, now they're putting four wheels on them and they, they roll a lot easier.
Right.
We can maybe do the same thing with a 65.
I haven't seen anything on either literature, not only theirs, but the three or four other major cart companies. I haven't seen anything, but we can ask.
They don't, they don't make one, that's the answer right now. But the idea is it has to be able to be stable at the curb. So if it had wheels on it, you know, it's going to start rolling around or, so that's, that's one of the issues. I mean, it's not just getting it there, but it has to somewhat stay there once it's there. Otherwise it could be.
I would have a problem if we were, you know, reacting to 10 local people. So I would say that you should probably set up some minimum, if you get less than 100 requests for a 35-gallon or something along those lines, set a limit so that you do, because when you go down on Wentzier Road, a lot of them are, the lids are up a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I can understand, we could get to and we can work at the, we can, we can, we're fine, but, but I would hate to split your inventory unless there's a, if this, if this shows you've only got 30 people asking, I would cancel it. Or even 200, I would cancel it. If there's a legitimate number of, you know, or maybe a couple of hundred, you could have them, but, but I'd be careful that way for the very reasons that you said on inventories and.
You know, and the other reason, we went back to the survey that we did, I believe it was in the fall of 2008, where we asked the residents about recycling and we said, you know, there's going to be more materials and would you be open to carts? And it was, it was very clear and it was amazing that the city was split right down the middle, 50/50, not only citywide, but per ward, 50/50. So again, we were trying to do our best to try and accommodate. The 3,600 that were handed out last year was first come, first served. And we've received about, about 200 phone calls that we've had to say, don't worry, you're going to get yours next summer, but thank you for being patient. We haven't received 1,000. We still have another 2,800 to go. And that's where we think that other 50% is sitting where they're saying, listen, I told you on the survey, we're not interested. We don't want one of these. So we're, we're trying to offer this as a second option. I understand what you're saying. And when we come back to the City Council.
So they may not call, they may say.
If it's a very low number, then we'll highlight that and let City Council make that decision.
And Michael, do you have any way of knowing what percentage of the objectors are objecting on aesthetic reasons as opposed to functionality?
We have, we have heard very few aesthetic issues, although they commented about that in the survey. The phone calls are much more from, in their opinion, difficult to use, difficult to handle, concerns about using them in the wintertime, but very few, I think I received maybe one phone call, someone saying.
You can fill it halfway and it weighs half as much. I mean, well.
A lot of it, not only moving it to the curb, but also room in their garage, space in their, in their garage and feeling guilty about leaving it out front or on the side of their house. So those really seem to be the two, the two big issues.
And Michael, needless to say, if you have residents who don't want to go that way, eventually we won't pick it up curbside, they can still take it to the compost center.
Absolutely correct. Saturday and Sunday, nine months out of the year, they can bring as much recycling as they'd like to, yes. But we are going to set a date where we're going to say, we're not going to collect the bins anymore.
Right.
So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item I would mention is this evening, we have, I think, three or four actions related to the electrical aggregation. We have to have our final public hearing with respect to the adoption of the POGO and then passage of the necessary ordinances. 74% of the voters approved moving in this direction. And I think all seven communities are scheduled to approve their final POGOs and their agreements either tonight or tomorrow night. And we will then have a meeting with the supplier at the end of this week and start looking actively at the markets and moving very quickly. The nice thing is, is that we are out ahead of most of the other 80 communities in the state of Illinois that did approve the referendum this, this last month in March. And so we're hoping to move fairly quickly because everything we've been told is when we go to market, the market's going to move with us. And we're a big group and we'll go forward from there. But we'd be happy to answer any other questions. We had a conference call this afternoon and I don't know if anybody's gotten any other feedback or you have any other questions with respect to electrical aggregation. Otherwise, we're teed up and ready to go.
Okay, great. Anything else? We've got 10 minutes, but enough work to get to 8:23.
No more items.
No more items.
Would you like to re-?
A little too, a little too efficient.
I'm all set.
Well, hearing nothing else then, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Hosed, hearing none?
We are adjourned, thank you.
Extremely efficient meeting, Alderman.
Congratulations.
We're working on it.
We're going to get out.